May 4th, 21, Westchester County Planning Board Meeting called to order. The next meeting dates are June 1st, July 6th, and then September 14th. Not going to meet in August. Is that correct?
That was the calendar that the board approved. We'll double check that though, Richard.
Uh, okay, but I mean, if there's nothing needed, fine, we can miss the August meeting. And I guess one day we'll be able to meet in person again. But it looks like not immediately. Okay, we have the adoption of the minutes. A revised minutes was sent out. Anyone have any comments or corrections on the minutes for April 6th?
Sorry, this is Holly. Yeah, just my name is spelled wrong on the third page. That's all. It's H A S B R O, okay, instead of B R O U C K.
Apologies, Holly. Thank you.
No problem.
Any other comments or corrections? If not, can I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
This is Rob, so moved.
Thank you, Rob. Can we have a second?
I'll second.
Finger second.
That you, Holly, the first time?
Yep.
Okay, Holly, seconds. Call the roll, please.
James Art. I saw James there. James, you there? You're muted?
Sorry, yes.
Great, thank you, James. Morning. Robert Baron?
Yes.
Dwight Douglas?
Yes.
Daniel Finger?
Yes.
Hamena Franchella? I haven't seen Hamena. Okay, Gail Katzman for Hugh Grecian?
Yeah.
Thank you. Polly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
Nat Federici for Vincent Copicki?
Yes.
Kathy O'Connor? I haven't seen Kathy yet. Okay, Bernie Toms?
Yes.
And Reenie Toback? See, Reenie, maybe she's muted.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Reenie. Good morning. Thank you all.
Okay, next Chairman's remarks. Let me ask the Commissioner, have we heard a response from Con Edison to our questions regarding tree trimming?
And so I did have a conversation with a representative of Con Edison who said that she was working on the response from the county and but that was probably three weeks ago. So, yeah, so no, we have not yet received an official response, but at least I understand they are working on it.
Yeah, this is coming too, but okay, this has been now six months, eight months, I forget, a long period of time. Con Ed has been completely non-responsive to the county planning.
I think they were at our November meeting, Richard, so it's, we're hitting six months.
Six months, okay. Okay, that's it for me. Chairman's remarks.
So, Richard did touch on meeting in person and the Parks Department has actually suggested perhaps we could meet at one of their county parks that has a gazebo. So we were wondering if perhaps the Ridge Road Park in Greenberg might make sense. You know, if, I think what we'll do is kind of put a survey out there and just, you know, have Michael and Bill follow up with each of you to see if that would make sense. And then, so that's first. Number two, we also need
Wait, Norma, is there a way to video the meeting out in the park?
Yeah, we would have to get the video team. We've done, remember when we went to Playland and we went to the jail, when we went to all the other places, we did have the County Communications Department came and videotaped it, so.
Playland was indoors, but okay, if it works.
Yeah. Usually in June, your board schedule is an extra meeting to discuss the capital projects that have come in and, you know, after the county departments do their review. So we are, another survey that we will be sending out would be trying to get some time to find a common time in June that would work so that you will be able to come back to your July meeting, have been already spent those couple of hours really thoroughly working with each of the departments where you might have questions, but looking through each of the requests for the 2022 capital budget. Just a heads up that we're going to probably look at, since you meet on Tuesdays, we're going to probably look at the second or third Tuesday of June, you know, to see if that would work. So if you could take a quick look at your calendars ahead before Michael or Bill reach out to you to see if that second, preferably, I think second Tuesday would work. That would be great. And then the last thing I had is just a reminder about financial disclosure. As board members, you, we all have a responsibility to complete the financial disclosure. So if you have not already, please get that in. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Next referrals, ratification of actions taken by staff in response to planning and zoning actions referred to County Planning Board, March 16th, 2021 through April 15th, 2021. Does anybody have any comments or additions or?
I have a quick comment.
Go ahead.
This is Daniel Finger. There's two items on here that where we mentioned our, you know, our opposition to the payment in lieu of with regard to the affordable housing, you know, units, a number of affordable housing units and projects and which I'm happy we're mentioning that, but I'm also hoping that maybe we can start looking at some way of, you know, redoing those type of zonings or, you know, getting rid of those type of systems. I mean, obviously us just saying that we don't like it, I don't think really is doing very much. So I, you know, I'm hoping we can look into some stronger way of opposing it and redoing those zoning requirements or planning requirements to get rid of that system.
Norma, does the county discretionary funding policy apply to those communities that don't have that that include payment in lieu of affordable housing? Norma, you're on mute.
Thank you, sorry. So yeah, some of, some, it does actually apply to some of them that allow it. I'm thinking like Bedford being one. So the discretionary funding policy applies to the 31 municipalities that were considered eligible under the housing settlement. We are still encouraging all municipalities to adopt the model ordinance provisions just because we think it all makes sense to have a standard conversation. But the model ordinance provisions are different and that's where we're, that's where we're saying that the developments and the should be, the inclusionary units should be included in the developments and not allowed offsite, so. But yeah, Richard, answer your question. Yeah, there's at least one where eligible municipality that does allow it.
But, so what you're saying is that communities that allow, within those 31, that allow a payment in lieu not be eligible for community development block grant funds and other county?
No, because they have adopted the model ordinance and they have zoning that's friendly to affordable housing. So just because we don't necessarily agree with some of what they, some of what their provisions allow doesn't mean that it's not friendly to providing affordable housing.
Well, go ahead.
One of the ones, just to mention, is in White Plains. It's the Gateway 2 referral where they're exercising a payment in lieu to satisfy the requirement for 25 affordable units. I mean, you know, this is White Plains, so well, you know, that they should, I mean, I, you know, I'm not sure what the different ordinance and what ordinance they have, but you know, that's one where they should certainly have to provide those units.
We happen to agree, but again, White Plains is a very diverse city to begin with. And my understanding is that the city wishes to build up their fund to be able to put affordable housing outside of the more urban area and into areas you wouldn't necessarily see affordable housing happen normally.
Daniel, that's not the only one in White Plains. The White Plains YMCA is going to be torn down and replaced by a large development with zero affordable units and they're going to pay, I think, $2 million into the
Right. That might have been the one we originally talked about.
Right, right. Well.
I mean, these are, I get what they're saying, but the, you know, the areas they're talking about where the Gateway 2 is and everything, I mean, that, that particular block with the buildings that are now there, that is not a very diverse block. So yes, it's technically urban, but you know, that, that is, that, where that building is and the two buildings next to it, which are the residential buildings in that area, there's, I guess, basically three residential buildings in that area, they're not very diverse. And I, I think it's kind of a shame that they're not, you know, I mean, I get it, I get what their excuse is, but I think it's a shame that they're not putting some affordable units in those buildings. Those buildings are not diverse.
Believe me, we agree, so.
Can you look into other than our comments in our letters to the local municipalities regarding this subject that what else might, the county might possibly be able to do?
Sure.
Okay. I mean, I don't know what, the answer may be nothing, but if you could just look into see, you know, what the county may be able to do such circumstances.
Well, I get the development that Daniel is talking about, maybe seeking IDA benefits. So the County Housing Opportunity Commission's recommendation was that IDA benefits should not be used in developments that are providing, not providing the units actually on site, so.
Yeah, that's a leverage point if.
So.
Okay, any other comments or questions on any of the referrals?
I have a question about the newer shell, the affordable housing, where they're saying that they revised the calculation of required affordable set-asides. And I just didn't really understand what, does that mean they're reducing the amount of affordable units? In their calculations? What does that translate to? It's under the zoning text amendment in New Rochelle on page 11.
My understanding was that it was mostly just technical amendments with this particular one. They were well, they were eliminating the provisions that allow for the offsite construction of affordable units, so that was one positive thing. But then they just had a couple of like, kind of more technical changes to the way they did it. And they were keeping the payments in lieu, which we, we want to discourage.
Right, right. But it doesn't sound like they're reducing the amount of unit, units required.
No, 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 they weren't like, they weren't changing like, they weren't changing the regulations that would allow like, for example, a developer to build less affordable units. That, that wasn't the intention. It was just to make, it was more just had to do with just the mechanics of the ordinance. And like I said, with the elimination of that provision to allow the offsite construction.
Right, okay.
Yeah, my, I also flagged that. This is Reenie. And it says the calculation for payments in lieu providing affordable housing would be changed to reflect area median income. And I'm wondering if that meant that they were going to use the local rather than the county median to reflect what the, what the rent would be. Which was interesting because there's been a lot of talk in Yonkers also about, you know, Yonkers medians as opposed to Westchester medians. So I was just curious about what that actually meant as well. All right, I think it would be informative for us to find out if there was some, you know, workaround to the county medians, at least in this particular.
Okay, can you find, can that be found out? It could be just that each year the area median income HUD comes up with new numbers. Could be they're just updating.
Right, right.
Or it could be something else, so if you can double check that.
I'll double check, but it wasn't, if it was something where they were making it less consistent with the model ordinance provisions, we would have flagged it. My recollection is that they were bringing it more into line with the model ordinance provisions, but the exception of that, the payment in lieu.
Okay, if you could check that out. Any other questions, comments on the referrals?
Yeah, Richard, it's James. I have a comment about the Gateway in White Plains.
Go ahead.
It's, what they're going to build is on the corner of Ferris and Hamilton, I would call it. Down there is the train station, the bus station, and all kinds of like pedestrian traffic. And I don't see anything about pedestrian or even a bike lane as they always talk about, because we do have bike lanes in White Plains. And additionally, behind it is the bronx, like the path. And is there going to be an easement that gives us access to the path? And on top of that, I read something about a commercial space or retail and where they're going to park those automobiles, right? So next to the, the project used to be a parking lot that they put 140 cars in, which is no longer there because they're building the two buildings over there. So where are they going to house the automobiles of people wanting to either A, catch the train, or B, stop in these shops?
The Gateway 2 site actually isn't along the train tracks. It's that, it's that surface lot that's next to
It's on the corner of Ferris, it's by Pepe, by Pepe Catalog, it's by, it's on Ferris Avenue, on the corner of Ferris and I'm not sure, Barker Avenue, I think it is, right there on the corner?
No, no, this one is on, it's bounded by Ferris Avenue, Hamilton Avenue, Lexington Avenue, and New Street. The street that goes underneath the parking structure next to the train center.
Oh, I see, okay. So it's the old Robert Martin Building on the corner then?
It's across the street from the Mercedes dealer.
But if you read it, they have proposed retail on the bottom and there's no parking for it. And on the backside of that building, which is the old Robert Martin Building, next to the other two towers that I think Daniel was talking about, was an empty lot that they're going to use, I believe, for this building. So where are they going to park the automobiles, right? Where are they going to, where is the traffic going to wind up going?
Well, the parking for the retail uses would be provided within the garage. They have 63 spaces on the side for the retail. All cars would come in and out of a driveway entrance on Ferris Avenue.
On Ferris Avenue, and that's across, was this directly across from the fire station, correct?
No, no, this is, this is directly across from the parking lot. It's across Ferris from the parking lot, for the, the surface parking lot for the train station.
Oh, it's down there, all right. Yeah, I think, now I think I know the area. Let me take a, I'll take a peek again. I thought it was a different area. This is, this is that sunken parking on Hamilton, up by the St. John's School. Oh, it's back up that way, okay, all right. I had a right and wrong structure in mind, okay, no problem.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
Yeah, hi, this is Rob, for Greenberg 21-003, the Regeneron parcel D. So this is, this is great that they definitely need, you know, to sort of focus on the pedestrian and bike plan. I guess my question is, is there like a transportation demand management plan overall for this complex that I guess will tie into, you know, the larger campus, nearby campus plan that we're, that we're working on?
Not that, not that I'm aware of. That's kind of why we, we made that comment about well, we, well, we talked about it in terms of like, the potential for like a bicycle sharing program. Just because that campus is so close to other campuses or places that you could kind of travel in between. Particularly now that, you know, you have good connectivity with the South County Railway and in the future with the Terrytown, Tensaco Railway. So we're trying to get them to think, you know, kind of holistically, you know, both, both Greenberg and Mount Pleasant, about the potential for those areas to kind of be connected by, you know, through a non-motorized mobility strategy.
So I guess, which is, which is great, I applaud that. I guess, I guess the larger question is, like, you know, they're adding, so they were approved for 868 spots in 2014, now they're asking for 1,030. I guess the sort of overall, is there, like, it would be great if we could sort of ask for a transportation demand management plan or suggest that they develop one, because I'm just afraid that sort of the number of car spaces is going to just keep inflating over time and we're never going to get a handle on this, it's just going to, you know, we're never going to achieve any kind of goal if we ever decide to have a goal on sort of trying to reduce driving. So if that's something that we can request, a TDM plan.
Lucas, is there anything in the EIS?
The EIS was so, a while ago, I think, for this one. Because this was a redo of a site plan that we reviewed in 2014.
Maybe go back, maybe go back to that EIS and see if they, if they had any transportation management.
We, we don't have that EIS anymore. It's just, it's so old that we don't have
That we request.
I can pretty much tell you though, that they didn't have a transportation management plan. I can almost guarantee that. Back when that EIS, you know, 10 years ago, they weren't talking about these types of things.
Well, maybe as part of the, doing the Valhalla Grasslands Plan, there should be some contact with the town of Greenberg and to work out a connection between the, you know, the transportation management for both.
Right, and that's one of our hopes of us doing this TDM for Grasslands is that we'll learn more about the area. It'll be an example for the surrounding towns and others in the county.
But, so, so Bill, that's, so Regeneron is not included in that Grasslands campus, is that correct?
Right, right. We're focusing on the campus. It's our campus, but we'll, you know, we have a understanding of the surrounding and connections to the surrounding and adjacent.
Right. I guess, I guess I'm sort of looking for an up, and as Richard sort of just said, just sort of said paraphrase, I mean, like, it would be great if we could sort of throw that out there and see if Greenberg picks up on it.
And we can chat with Greenberg as well, so.
Is there, is there somewhere a model transportation demand management plan that would be available as a, like, pro forma type?
This is Naomi, if I can just jump in. There, there are some out there, but typically they're tailored toward individual campuses that they were designed for. But the, the whole idea of this plan that we're going to develop for Grasslands is that it can be used for a model, or at least, you know, elements could be, make it be used for, as a model for other sites. And, and one of the products that we've, we've asked for from our consultants is a toolkit that they would leave us with that then we could kind of take this out and use it for other sites.
Is there a timeframe on that?
We're going to have a kickoff meeting with our consultant in the next couple of weeks and hopefully, you know, we'll get something, you know, the whole, the whole project should be done within, within a year.
Why don't we just alert Greenberg of the concern or interest in whether there is a plan, such a plan for, I mean, Regeneron's a major company. You would think that they probably would want to have a transportation management plan on their own. So maybe if we can try to find out. Any other comments or questions?
Richard, this is Dwight.
Yeah, go ahead, Dwight.
I need to recuse myself on the solo diversified use development on Lower South Street. That's, I don't, what is it here? 21-001 Peak Scale. Second question I had is on the Mamaroneck self-storage DEIS. I was wondering what triggered a DEIS for that project, or is it just the community decided to do it? I couldn't see anything about it that would require an environmental impact statement.
We couldn't figure that out either. I was kind of stumped as to why they would require an EIS for the, since it already existed and they didn't require the EIS the first time around when we reviewed it several years back. Nonetheless, the EIS was a very short document. And, you know, we just reviewed it. There wasn't a lot to say.
Okay. Yeah, I have one comment. I know that we've probably put this in letters recently, but just to be consistent, there's been a lot of rezone, rezonings of downtown areas, whether it's Chappaqua or Mount Vernon or Mount Kisco. And as our experience in Portchester has shown, this can lead to extensive displacement of both residential and commercial tenants and the demolition of historic buildings. And I think I just would hope that we could put in all of our letters that those two issues need to be studied as part of the process of reviewing any of these rezonings. Any other comments or questions? Then can I have a motion to ratify the actions taken by staff? Dwight, recusing himself on the one in Lower South Peak Scale.
So moved, this is Dwight.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second is Kathy.
Thank you, Kathy. Call the roll, please.
James Art?
Yes.
Robert Baron?
Yes.
Dwight Douglas?
Yes.
Daniel Finger?
Yes.
Hamena Franchella?
Yes.
Gail Katzman for Hugh Grecian?
Yeah.
Holly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Richard Hyman?
Yes.
Nat Federici for Vincent Copicki?
Yes.
Kathy O'Connor?
Yes.
Bernie Toms?
Yes.
And Reenie Toback?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next action, next referral, Yonkers 21-006, Ludlow Street Transit Oriented Development Plan Draft Generic Environmental Impact Statement. Handling that one?
It's going to be Michael Vernon, and so Michael, and we'll
There we go.
Great, thank you, Michael.
Okay, so let me share my screen here. And everyone can see the presentation?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a referral for a transit oriented development plan centered around Ludlow Street in South Yonkers. Let me get my pointer here. The city, the city has submitted a draft generic EIS for the plan and also for associated zoning code and map changes. There's also two site-specific development proposals that are mentioned in the DGIS. They are going to have their own separate plans and EIS is submitted later, but they're incorporated as part of this DGIS for planning purposes. This map here shows the location of the Ludlow TOD study area, circled in red, which is south of downtown Yonkers. Downtown Yonkers is up here by the Yonker Station. The main street connection between downtown and Ludlow is Riverdale Avenue, which runs along the center here. And the site itself contains the Ludlow Metro North Train Station. Zooming in on the site, the study area is centered around Ludlow Street, which runs through the center of the site and the surrounding blocks. The main train station access is from the Ludlow Street Bridge, which crosses over the tracks, but there is a secondary access to the Norpound Platform from Abe Cohen Plaza right here. The blue circle shows the quarter mile buffer from the bridge entrance to the train station. The northern end of the study area contains Anthony Boyle Park, which is across the tracks from the Domino Sugar Refinery, which is over here and is a major employment center for the city. To the south of the site is the County Waste Water Treatment Plant. And there are two schools that lie just outside the study area's borders, St. Peter's School, which is a Catholic school, and then the Eugenia Maria de Elsos Public School, which is right here, which is part of the Yonkers school system. The study area is generally characterized by underutilized manufacturing and industrial uses, which is all this purple here with Ludlow Street and its bridge of the train tracks. With Ludlow Street and its bridge of the train tracks serving as the truck access route from Riverdale Avenue. Over to the uses on the riverfront and the riverfront uses are more, more developed here with again, the Domino Sugar Refinery. Treatment plant trucks access, there's a school bus parking lot area and also Hudson Scenic Studio, which actually provides set design for various Broadway shows down in the city. Two-family and multifamily buildings line the edge of the study area along Pier Street down here, also on Noel Street. And along Hawthorne Avenue. Which is a secondary north and south route through the, through the site. South of the site is the Ludlow Park Neighborhood, which is dominated by more single-family properties. Which has higher than average income compared to the rest of the city. And then north and east of the study area contains various multifamily buildings with some commercial and mixed use along Riverdale Avenue. Prior planning efforts within Yonkers established a need for revitalization of this area. As its underutilization and access to mass transit leads to the opportunity for transit-oriented development and the inclusion of a mix of uses. These qualities were described in the comprehensive plan from the year two thousand. The city started redevelopment in the downtown through the focused planning study that is actually similar to this Ludlow study. But was larger in scope and that's zoning amendments that were passed in two thousand and eleven. In two thousand and fourteen, the Hudson River Valley and Greenway Link Study was conducted to promote a multi-purpose corridor through Southern Yonkers. That connect the Greenway, which runs from New York City upstate to Saratoga County. And then in two thousand and seventeen, the Ginsburg Development Company submitted a development proposal for a city-owned vacant site between Downing Street and Noel Street. As well as a separate plan to really develop seventy Pier Streets. These are the two developments that are incorporated into the Ludlow Plan and the submitted DGIS, and I'm going to discuss them a little bit more in depth later on. Alongside the Ludlow TOD Study, a traffic and parking study was conducted within the Ludlow Park Neighborhood, that area to the south of the site. Because there were some residents that were concerned that the neighborhood streets were being used by non-residents for parking. And that the streets may have increased traffic due to the TOD. The study, that study determined that parking during the day was considerably lower than parking at night, indicating that commuter use for the train station was minimal currently. And that changes to the traffic patterns proposed in the DOT Plan would not be expected to increase traffic in the Ludlow Park Neighborhood. Now regarding the TOD Study, there are six planning goals that were established. The first was to create a mixed-use neighborhood center, encouraging more uses compatible with transit-oriented developments. With denser residential development should be permitted as well as retail. Job creation opportunities should be a focus when determining which uses should be included. And as opposed to other TODs that are, that are normally found, they're actually planning on including light industrial uses. To kind of realize that there is a historical industrial use there, but only light industrial that wouldn't affect residential, residential uses. And they also focus on making sure that access to existing jobs is improved in the area. Open spaces should also be improved, including Old Boyle Park, the Abe Cohen Plaza, and the plan includes a prospective new waterfront park. Where the current bus parking is. Pedestrian and bicycle connections need to be established through the neighborhood, including improving sidewalks and the creation of new bicycle lanes. The Metro North Station should be improved to accommodate better pedestrian access, more commuter parking and better, and to better connect to the existing beeline bus services. That run along Riverdale and Hawthorne Avenues. And finally, the plan seeks to improve the aesthetics of the neighborhood with new design guidelines, facade improvements, and creating a more pedestrian-friendly streetscape. Excuse me. The study determined that the existing zoning for the area would not only prohibit the goals established in the plan. But also do not match a lot of the existing land uses or also cause dimensional non-conformities with existing buildings. Most of the existing zoning does not allow either residential uses or retail. So what they are planning is for a new LMX or Ludlow Mixed Use Zone to be added to the code. And to be located within most of the Ludlow Study Area. So that's that pink color on the map here. Two mid-block sections of the northern side of Pier Streets, which is this kind of highlighter green color here. Would become URMD or Medium Density Urban Residential. That district type was established in the downtown rezoning plan and would be used here to alleviate the dimensional non-conformities. Between the existing buildings and the existing zoning, because these buildings right now are more townhouses. And this also would allow a transitional zone between the higher density area along Ludlow Street and the lower density areas to the south. The existing M or Medium Density Apartment House zoning would be extended. Along the western side of Stanley Place and along the western side of Riverdale Avenue with this orange color here. And that's mainly in order to consolidate the existing M zoning districts so that we don't have tiny little zones in the middle of these bigger zones. But they also, but they also do the same thing as the other residential zone in bringing the zoning standards more in line with what is existing. And finally, the I Zone, which is industrial, would stay within the Hudson and Metro North train tracks to accommodate the wastewater treatment plant, Hudson Scenic and the, the Sugar Refinery. The LMX District includes most of the traditional mix of uses found in the transit-oriented developments. They promote retail and restaurants on the first floor with residential or offices on the upper floors. And then again, in account with the historic industrial use of the area, the district would also permit light industrial and manufacturing. Ground floor commercial uses would be more firmly established by determining Ludlow and Bridge Streets as key streets. Which would require specific uses on the ground floor with a focus on pedestrian-oriented development. And that's something again, they took away from the downtown rezoning plan. Dimensional regulations within the new LMX Zone are rather generous, only requiring a ten-foot rear yard setback. And a seventy percent building coverage, front yard setbacks, they prefer the setbacks to be zero, so buildings are along the streets. But if they are provided, they must be five feet. The general height of the buildings within this area would be regulated to sixty-five feet. At all with a minimum of twenty-five foot. But higher heights are permitted closer to the train station as determined by a height district map, which I'm going to go over soon. The code includes a full series of design standards such as commonly seen in form-based codes. Which calls for greater standards in building design and materials. And specific standards are codified for residential, commercial, and industrial uses. An example here is. This building kind of establishing where windows should be placed in compared to the first floor, so things like that. There's also a whole set of parking standards that are also included, including regulating open lots to the rear of properties. And establishing design standards for the parking garages. Landscaping elements are also required to break up larger parking lots and cross easements and shared driveways between lots are encouraged, as shown in this lower diagram here. Parking ratios would relatively match the downtown requirements as they are both found around transit-oriented quotas. For instance, within a quarter mile radius of the train station, that blue circle that I showed before. One parking space would be required for every multifamily residential units. But then beyond that radius, an additional point three-three spaces are required for each bedroom in a unit. And that's the standard elsewhere in the city. The height regulations are specified in this map here, establishing an increase in heights towards the train station. These heights correspond with the proposed Ginsburg Development Proposal with a hundred forty to a hundred fifty foot height permitted within the Downing Street Site, which is this orange block right here, or red. Bonus heights of up to a hundred feet would be allowed along Bridge Streets near Abe Cohen Plaza. Incentivizing developers to construct a commuter parking near the train station. And then any increase in height above the standard sixty-five feet in those two areas would include specific setback and spacing regulations for the buildings. The plan states that these proposed heights correspond to the existing zoning high regulations as the M Zone. Which is, which would, is normally over here would permit sixty-five feet. There's an apartment zone which would promote ninety feet and the I Zone actually permits a hundred twenty feet. So currently it steps back like that and they're trying to keep that same height allowance in, within the new zone with this height district map. As the neighborhood would increase in population, transportation improvements are analyzed within the plan. Pier Street currently has a one-way section between Riverdale and Hawthorne Avenues right along here. The plan seeks to convert this into a two-way street to provide more access within the neighborhood. Though the Riverdale intersection over here would only permit right turns out from Pier Street, so they wouldn't be able to turn north from Pier Street. We would also recommend that if they are changing that to one-way, Purser Place and Morris Streets, which are down here outside of the plan. Should also be converted into two ways to minimize confusion and better serve the traffic network, or else there would really be only one way. In, out of some of these areas here. The plan also proposes putting a bike lane along Pier Street to connect the east and west sides of the neighborhood. They'd rather put it on Pier Street than Ludlow because Ludlow is currently a very busy truck access route again to the industrial uses along the riverfront. So they feel it's safer to put it along Pier Street as that's more, has a residential character. And we would recommend, they don't say it specifically, but we would, we would recommend in our letter, this to be a fully separated bike lane. As part of the Ginsburg Development up here, the Downing Street Site, Bridge Street would be extended north. It currently ends here. They want to extend it all the way north to Downing Streets and then connect Downing Streets to form a block like that. And then also promote or propose a new promenade for pedestrians between this extension and the train tracks. So right along here, this blue dotted line. This would allow direct pedestrian connectivity between the train station, which is down here, and to Boyle Park. And additionally, a bike route is proposed along this promenade to connect Bonavista Avenue through the park. Down Bridge Streets to Abe Cohen Plaza and then to the neighborhoods to the south. We would again recommend that this bike route also be a fully separated lane or pathway. The, the plan calls to upgrade the existing Greenway along Riverdale Avenue to make it a true multi-use path. And to, because right now it's more just a widened sidewalk within a larger green space, but still just a wide sidewalk. They also want to analyze the intersections along Riverdale Avenue to determine if additional streetlights or turning accommodations are needed in any of these various intersections. Finally, general streetscape improvements are proposed to make the area more walkable, including adding street trees, upgrading the lighting, widening the sidewalks. Replacing utility wires underground, some wayfinding signage, and also adding bike racks along in the neighborhood. Now there are some ideas around Ludlow Station, because right now Ludlow Station currently has no waiting room or any enclosed spaces. And is also not ADA compliant, as there's no elevators to the platforms. Again, the only access is from, the only access to the southbound platform is across the Ludlow Street Bridge and there's stairs there. Yonkers is currently rehabilitating the bridge, but the plan calls for the addition of elevators to access both platforms here and here. This adjacent property, one hundred seventy Ludlow Street is a prime location for development, as stated by the plan. It calls to permit an extra height up to a hundred feet in exchange for provided commuter parking and the northbound platform elevator. The city recognizes that Ludlow Station is among the lowest used on the Hudson Line and that the MTA upgrades are. Probably unlikely if low ridership continues. They state that as the TOD Plan seeks to increase the population of the neighborhood. They hope that ridership increases, which could prompt the MTA to upgrade the station in the future. Now Abe Cohen Plaza, which is adjacent to the northbound platform, acts as a vehicular drop-off location and also has a small parking area around the edges. And contains a very small green space in the middle with some benches. And the previously mentioned one hundred seventy Ludlow Street lies to the north and then that second Ginsburg's development site, seventy Pier Street, lies to the south. The TOD Plan includes four different redevelopment options. With the first being just a general update of the existing plaza with better landscaping, bike racks, and new pedestrian amenities. They state in the plan that if the redevelopments of one hundred seventy Ludlow Street doesn't occur and no new building is placed there. They promote a second option, which is to expand the plaza to include more green space and more parking, as seen in this example here. This is just a kind of a concept example. The third option would be for one hundred seventy Ludlow to be converted into a parking structure with station amenities, like a coffee shop and restrooms. And then the fourth option, the one that they're hoping for is for the aforementioned mixed-use building, which would include commuter parking. Now these two Ginsburg Development Sites that I mentioned are two sites that are undergoing a planning process alongside the TOD Plan. The Ludlow Point Site, which is that one between Ludlow and Downing Street with these two orange boxes here. Would host two twelve-story buildings currently as the DGIS. There were some. Inconsistencies between the plan and the DGIS, so they're, they're still going through the planning process for that. But right now they're saying two twelve-story buildings with five hundred twenty residential units estimated for that site. Integrated parking garages and ground floor commercial spaces would be included as part of this larger complex. And then that also includes. Actually closing Noel Street, which currently runs through to Bridge Street right here. They're going to close that and provide an access point for the garage. And then again, Bridge Street is to be pushed north to connect to Downing Street to form a more squared block. The second site, known as the Yonkers Parking Authority Site at seventy Pier Street, this pink one down here. Is proposed by the south of Abe Cohen Plaza and is proposed to be four stories and include thirty-six residential units. Another parking garage and ground floor commercial space for use by the train station users. The plan states that for both of these sites, affordable housing is to be provided as per the Yonkers Regulations. These plans again have not been finalized and would need to go through their own site plan and EIS process. A lot of these are kind of just concepts that they have, but it is driving the TOD Plan as well. The last major initiative in the plan is a recommendation for a new waterfront park north of the wastewater treatment site. Which is down here. Again, this is the Ludlow Street Bridge. Up here. The site currently is a school bus parking area. The city hopes to add water-based recreation amenities as well as defense spaces. And again, this is more of a concept diagram. It's not exactly. What they're planning in stone yet. This is again, concept diagram. Vehicular parking would be part of this plan along the sides of Fenbrook Street. And we should recommend in our letter that bicycle access and parking also be noted in the plan. They're hoping with this parking to kind of do a shared parking so that in the daytime it's used, it can be used by commuters and then at nights and weekends, it's more for park resident, or park guests. The plan states that a full feasibility and design study would be needed for this park. We also note that the public boating activity that they're proposing would need to be directed away from the wastewater treatment plants to keep everyone safe. The DGIS conducted a build-out scenario that estimates an increase of seven hundred ninety-seven residential units within the next ten years. Five hundred fifty-six of these would be from the Ginsburg Development Sites and then two hundred forty-one would come from the natural increase due to the zoning changes around the rest of the. Rest of the TOD sites. The DGIS estimates a range of seventeen to thirty-six schoolchildren would be added to the population. As the TOD nature of the zoning change favors families without children. The DGIS determines that this wouldn't adversely impact the school district. The plan estimates an increase of around fifty-eight thousand square feet of commercial space, mostly located on the first floors of buildings. And now we did mention in our prior letter for the GIS scoping documents. That the wastewater treatment plant could impact any new developments in the Ludlow area due to odor, noise, and light. The DGIS mentions that the proximity of the plant to the site. But it stated that air quality monitoring and testing is ensured by the state DEC and should result in no anticipated impacts for the TOD area. The DGIS includes statements that new buildings would have to follow the Yonkers Green Building Code. And also as locations are historically industrial, brownfield remediation may have to take place in some of these areas. Ginsburg Development's already pursuing an application for the state brownfield cleanup program for their Ludlow Point Site, the larger twelve-story building site. Finally, complete streets policies are stressed within the study. In addition to the bike path additions and pedestrian amenities already described in the TOD Plan. The DGIS kind of is pushing more complete streets opportunities for the plan. Traffic mitigation measures are specified for a few intersections along Riverdale Avenue. As the DGIS foresees few areas of negative traffic impact based and. Kind of the redesign of Pier Streets and some analyzing some of the intersections is to take any impact that does happen out of the equation. Now regarding next steps, the DGIS will have a public hearing on May eleventh and comments are accepted until May twenty-seventh. So I will be drafting a letter to circulate it to the board for your review. Based on your comments today and any that you might have later. So if there's any questions or comments?
Thank, thank you, Michael. Maybe we'll have our Yonkers representative start with comments.
That would be me.
Go ahead.
Well, first of all, there is another school in the, in or near the area. I can't exactly tell. It's the Pearls Hawthorne School.
Yes, that one's a little bit, that one was more south of the site. But yes, yeah, that is nearby.
Yes, and it's, well, I think it's actually in that. Circle, but it doesn't matter. But so there is another one there. One of the comments that I have is that this Ginsburg Development, the towers. Is going to place a very large. Non-transversible block. And in the middle with the closing of Noel Street, it's going to be. Parking, but otherwise pretty traffic-free. So there's going to be a very large, very tall. Block. Placed right in the middle of this and it, the traffic will be completely routed around it. Which will only make the traffic situation in that area, which is already pretty bad, worse. And I had the same comment about the bicycle lanes. I do not see on these small streets, the Pier Street, Ludlow Street, they're, these are small, narrow street. How you would put in a bicycle lane with any kind of a division. And how you would make it at all safe. I think the only way to do that would be removing some of the sidewalks. That exist there. It's very, very difficult to get up and down these streets because they're all completely double parked. People just leave their cars right in the middle of the street. Parking is a very big problem in the area and we've already seen on Morris Crescent. People turning their front yards into parking spaces. Which not only makes the area quite ugly, but also removes one public parking space, making it a reserved. Private space for that. Informal driveway. So, and the zero setback. On these areas, even though there are buildings that are of the recommended height, the sixty five feet height. Those are intermittent as opposed to in a block. And if, if there is zero setback from the sidewalk. You're going to create a very canyon-like appearance, you know, as it becomes more and more developed at that height. And how you're going to then. Deal with the bike lane, which as far as I can see is going to require removing the sidewalk. Or removing parking from there is going to be very difficult. So I, I think there needs to be a little more realistic. Look at what these streets actually look like and assuming that the pavement will be repaired. Because you cannot ride a bike on those streets safely now because of the very large number and depth of the potholes, bumps and other miscellaneous. Also, I would point out that although this Ludlow Station is called Transit Center. There is no local transit there or within a ten minute walk. It's probably a fifteen to twenty minute walk to the nearest bus. At least at the pace I walk.
Cause there are two, there are two bus lines, one along Riverdale and one along Hawthorne.
Yes, and well, the one along Hawthorne runs regularly during school hours. Once an hour and it sometimes arrives and sometimes does not arrive. It does not run on weekends. It does not run evenings. It does not run at night. And to walk to Riverdale is a good fifteen to twenty minute walk. Uphill. So.
They did mention in the plan that they, they were hoping to. Cause right now those, those bus lines exist and they under, they understand in the plan that, that it's very limited service. So they mentioned in the plan, talking with the B line to perhaps find a way to route the buses closer to the station. But they didn't really delve too much into that. It's kind of seemed for now they're going to leave it.
And there are no visible plans anywhere that would. Indicate that that is actually a priority. And how they would get the buses up and down that area. I don't, you know, there's no really. Feasibility or active discussion of it. So this Ludlow Station is not a good place for local. Transit at all. It's a commuter railroad. It takes you to New York City. And it can be used to go to downtown Yonkers. If you're satisfied with the. You know, with the once every hour or half hour, depending on the time of day running. I do have to record, you know, say that the improvements to the station and to the area are very, very welcome. And it, if it were more accessible, it might be more well-used because it is. Not terribly accessible. It's, it's very difficult. And I do know that, that people do drive to the Yonkers Station. So to use the same, the same line. So in the, that's just. The development in the area is very welcome, but the extreme height and the. Degree to which these new green Ginsburg properties would be cut off from the surrounding area are. You know, kind of. Warning signs and the transportation around that area may be somewhat difficult. But require a great deal of street widening, flattening and so forth.
Thank you.
Kind of a mixed review. It's much better than the initial proposals, however.
Thank you, Renee. You'll get, we'll get the draft letter. Anyone else have any comments on the Ludlow Street DGIS?
This, this is Rob. Hi. So first of all, thank you very much for the sort of points that you made, Michael, about the, about the bike lanes and hopefully making them. Providing some separation and protection. Is there any kind of, excuse me? Is there any kind of bike parking at the station? Excuse me, I'm sorry. Get some water.
Um, as of right now, they state that there isn't. So they are hoping to put some in with the, the plaza redesign.
Actually, there is bike parking at, at the, on the bridge over the station. There is some bike parking.
Well, I, I guess, I guess, you know, to Renee's point that, that, you know, they're creating this sort of quote unquote transit village, but. They're inviting a lot of cars to this transit village. And I think that's, that's part of, I think, my, my reaction to it that. What we should be doing is sort of pressing them to. Is to try to get this to be even more of a transit village by. Reducing the parking and, you know, or making it even more, you know, more difficult to bring your car. At the same time, increasing the opportunities for park, for, for bringing your bike. So for example. In whatever parking structures that they, that they build, there should be. A significant, secure indoor bike parking facility. That's, that's integrated into it. They are, and, and including in all the buildings as well. I'm sure Lucas, when these buildings come up, we'll. We'll talk about this. The other point I wanted to ask about is, is, you know, this actually retail is not a big thing right over here. I mean, the big retail corridor is really over on Broadway. Is there any kind of prescription? For retail, like a grocery store and so there, other necessary amenities?
They, in this plan, they didn't specify types of retail. They really just mentioned providing space for retail and restaurants. So no, there wasn't any prescribed types of retail that I can see in the plan.
But there was recognition of, of the fact that this is really not going to be very attractive to retail. Because there has never really grown up much retail in this area, although the area does have some. Small grocery shops and things like that, you know, not, not large stores, but they are. Assuming that the large towers will create some demand for retail in that area. And one of the problems with this station is that it is very difficult to get to by any means other than car. And in the morning, the drop off situation there creates a tremendous hazard. Not only do you have trucks unloading in Abe Cohen Plaza, but you have U-turns. Constantly on the bridge for people dropping other people off. It is not. An easily accessible area by either, either pedestrian access or by foot. It is even difficult. To get there because of the hills involved, because of the condition of the streets, because of the narrowness of the streets. I do not see how without a really major revamp of the streets. You're going to induce people to arrive there in any other way besides the car.
Well, so I think, I think what I'm, what I'm, the point I'm trying to make is that instead of looking at this as Ludlow Station, a suburban parking ride. Which is what we're sort of doing by building all the.
That's exactly what it is. Yeah, you're right.
Yeah. So it's, it's, instead of looking at it that way, but what we possibly look at it is, is sort of try to use like the example of say Arlington, Virginia's metro stations. Where we are essentially, you know, reducing the parking for the station there. Not providing these sort of even kiss and rides, you know, at, at these, at this location. But this is not a draw, a great place to drop off your family member. And, you know, and sort of push the cars away from the station as much as possible. And, and replace that with housing with, you know, reduced parking requirements. So that this becomes a place, you know, a more sort of walkable place, like in the same way Arlington, Virginia did to their metro stations.
Yeah, I can tell you that parking is a huge issue in this neighborhood. Huge. People are parking on their lawns. People, we actually have people parking to the south. With bike racks and then getting on their bikes. So transforming this sounds nice. It would be lovely. But it's not going to happen without major. Changes to the neighborhood, to the streets, et cetera. And a lot of people. Do do their parking ride at the Yonkers Station, which is why the Ludlow Station is so little used. Because it is very, very unattractive.
Are there any other, any other members want to speak on this issue?
Yes, it's Jimena. I wanted to make a comment in regard to the units and the number of children that was being proposed. So it's seven hundred and ninety six. Units and they only expect seventeen to thirty six children. There. And, and I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, from seeing other developments, they always seem to underestimate. The number of children that come to live in this area. So I think that needs to be taken into consideration. And I also had a question. Are developers, do they have to give some kind of money? You know, when they're estimating the number of children because they always seem to underestimate. So is there any correlation with money that they have to give out or? You know, because I, I seem to, to feel that it's always underestimated.
They don't mention anything about any, any fees or anything like that. I, I don't know offhand if that's something that's common.
Yeah, I just know that we have discussed that also on this area. And they're convinced that it's, of course, a, a large number of the units here are single. Single bedrooms or studios and they're talking about. That it's, it's going to, they're going to make it attractive to divorced fathers. And others, you know, couples and young, single adults, but they have made this contention throughout the development. And the neighborhood is very. Disagrees a lot that there won't be a good deal more children than as Shamina says, that it is a very small estimate and it's. Kind of, you know, not very realistic, just as a lot of the other things are.
Any other members have comments?
Just to back up on that one, Richard D, we, it would be worth, you know, we've had a number of these apartment buildings built. One and two bedroom mostly that have generated numbers of very small numbers of schoolchildren. It'd be kind of good to see if we can backtrack a bit. My experience with the one project that we did in Dobbs Ferry was that it did not, we had like two hundred units. And it did generate like ten school kids, school age kids. So the, and, and even there, I just, I, that was the latest figure. It'd be kind of neat to know if that's the way things are going, because it's the calculation that developers are using. To show a little impact on the school district. They, they don't usually want the money. Sent over to the school district as, as Mena was paying, but they looking at it to say, well, are we going to have to build a new classrooms? Are we going to have to hire new teachers and stuff like this? So their calculation is to show that there's very little impact on the school district. And just sad to say, my experience was there are very little impact on the school kids for these kind of mid-rise, high-rise. Apartment buildings with one and two bedroom that are set up for TOD or a quick access to, in the case of Dobbs Ferry into the Sawmill Parkway. So that there was just, as they said, and as the first numbers came in, when it first got settled, very few school kids had, had actually got generated. So. So that's one point I would, I would make that. And that doesn't seem to me to be the key issue, though. It would be good to know if we get a little bit of a study to see. What's going on in White Plains and all the other centers that have these kind of new apartment buildings going up. The big thing that keeps coming back is the, and this is the, the big point Renee was making is that the streets. The streets have to work for pedestrians and bicyclists and. If you're going to have that kind of a development that we're talking about where people then can walk over and get onto the train and stuff. So. That's the, everything that everybody said seems to me to come down to having a close look at the streets. If they're narrow. They probably, and we want to put a bike lane in, it probably means that they can't have any parking on the street. And, and that, that kind of. Action would have its consequences, but that's, that's where I would put a focus of actually taking a look at. The streets, the width currently, the current use, the planned improvements. Put in, put in a bike lane and see what happens. And I would say we should go back to them and say, let's do that. And then if that means no parking, that's, that's what it means. And then add that to the equation for people in the area. So that they understand that they're going to lose on-street parking. So that, that'd be my main, I think the main focus from all the discussion would. Would go to that and making it a peaceful, walkable. Bicycle area and an enhanced train station could make sense. But that, that whole, how the streets will work is, is pretty key to that whole thing.
Yeah, and.
Michael, you have.
Michael is right. Michael is, is really right. And one of the impediments to making it a good bicycle place. Is that it's very hilly. You cannot do this on a three-speed bike. You need more than that. And I know because I had, had a three-speed bike and I couldn't get up these hills. So.
Okay, I, I would like, I'd like to move along. We have, Michael, if you can take all these comments as you draft the letter, the letter will be. Sent out. I think you said the hearing is May eleventh and the deadline for comment is the twenty ninth. So if you.
Twenty seventh, but yeah.
When you say, if you can get it to the members for review. Before it gets sent out and if you can incorporate a lot of the comments that we came up today.
Yes, of course.
Thank you. Let's go to matters for board action. Acquisition of one eighty seven Cottage Street, Mount Vernon, amendment to the capital budget.
Good morning. This is, yeah, this is Bill. Michael's going to get up the PowerPoint presentation. As Richard mentioned, this is a capital budget amendment. For a, a new project BLA oh five acquisition of one eighty seven Cottage Avenue in Mount Vernon. So I don't know if Michael has that PowerPoint coming. And you can even flip the slides for you, Michael. If not, maybe I can share the screen and pull up the PowerPoint. Here it goes. Thanks. Okay, great. Thank you, Michael. And thanks everyone for their patience. Sometimes it's, it's not so easy to pull this stuff up on a, as we're moving along. So. So, and if Michael, if you can make that full screen, that'd be helpful too. And so I'll, again, capital budget amendment to add a project to the twenty twenty one. Capital projects, a million dollars is proposed for the acquisition of this property at one eighty seven Cottage Avenue in Mount Vernon. capital projects. A million dollars is proposed for the acquisition of this property at 187 Cottage Avenue in Mount Vernon. This is a, this is a residential property that's in foreclosure and currently in bankruptcy court. The property, through the acquisition, the property would be preserved until a future use is determined. And that future use could be affordable housing or senior housing. Next slide, Michael. Just to give you a little bit of idea, I know that map's a little bit basic, but it's centrally located in Mount Vernon and residential area north of downtown Mount Vernon, north of the Mount Vernon East Train Station. Next slide, Michael. I'm going to see a little bit closer view and an aerial photo. Again, dense residential area. It's just one block west of the Lincoln Avenue Elementary School. Lincoln Avenue is a kind of an east-west corridor within the city. They've got cuts, cuts across the city. The area zone RMF, multifamily 6.75, which allows up to three units of multifamily and multifamily building. Next slide. Here you get a feel for this, what East Lincoln Avenue looks like in that immediate area. The, the residential property and the subject properties to the left, not the big white building immediately to the left, but the kind of a yellowish building, a little, the one further up on the left there. Again, lots of multi-two, three-family type houses in the area. Michael, next slide. Thank you. And this is a close-up of the other side. This is facing Lincoln. The first photo you saw was facing Cottage Avenue. This is facing Lincoln Avenue. Again, larger residential property. And so again, acquisition of the property. And again, for the million dollars is to purchase the property and also secure the property. We'll make sure that it's in good shape while, while the, that future use is lined up. So in your materials, you were sent a draft resolution and a planning board report supporting the rec, supporting the acquisition. Does anyone have any questions?
Bill, I'm not sure why we're doing this.
Again, if the, the, the property, and I'll let anyone else who wants to jump into. The property is currently in foreclosure and the county is deeming this as an opportunity to acquire the property. And for, for future use, likely residential use. And to, you know, the property was in, is in bad shape. And again, it's an opportunity to purchase the property.
Bill, what are you going to, the affordable homes that we're giving out? Let's say we make apartments out of it or?
Again, that's a potential, that those are potential types use, types of uses. Yep. Again, with the multifamily zoning district, you know, that would be considered in creating, you know, affordable housing potentially.
Right. So would it be a single-family home or a multifamily home?
It, it would. It would be a multifamily. It could likely also be a senior residence. There, there's, there's quite a potential here. And that's why the county is kind of excited about the opportunity to purchase a large home like this. I mean, this particular area of Mount Vernon and the city is on board with it to be able to explore some different opportunities of what might make the most sense here.
Any other questions or comments? If not, we have a resolution in your package to amend the 2021 capital projects request to add the acquisition of 187 Cottage Avenue. Do I have a motion?
This is Holly. I'll move.
Can you finger a second?
Pull the roll, please.
James Art?
Yes.
Yes.
Dwight Douglas?
I'll abstain.
Daniel Finger?
Yes.
Jimena Francella?
Yes.
Gail, catsman, are you grechin?
Yes.
Holly Hasbrook?
Yes.
Holly, you still there?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Holly. Richard Hyman?
Yes.
Nat Federici for Vincent Kupicki?
Yes.
Kathy O'Connor?
Yes.
Bernie Toms?
Yes.
Reenie Toback?
Yes.
Good. Thank you.
Okay, next on our agenda is Memorial Field update.
This is Gail. Can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hi. So good morning, everyone. I'll give you an update on the status of construction of the Memorial Field project. Could you go to the next slide? Okay, so here are some renderings of what the finished project will look like. There will be a football at multi-sport field with an eight-lane track. Bleachers with seating for 3,900. There'll be an entry plaza with concession and bathrooms plus two ticket booths. There's also going to be a skate park and three tennis courts on site. And the project will also include fencing and landscaping and utility infrastructure that is needed. Next slide. Okay, so here's just, you know, a planned view of the whole site. You can see all the components of the project. Next slide. So here you can see, you know, the status of the project. It's a recent picture. Construction started in September of last year. The contract award price was just under 25 million. So we're still in the stage of clearing the site, excavation and early into foundations. If we could go to the next slide. Here are some more pictures of work at the site. So the status of construction, we have completed site demolition. We're almost complete with the excavation to grade and the rock excavation. And we're, we're pretty far along on the pile driving, which are the foundations. There've been some challenges at the site. There has been more soil removal than anticipated. More unexpected debris buried at the site than anticipated. And more unforeseen rock drilling and removal that was anticipated. So we're right in the thick of, of that, dealing with that. The next two months will be critical for understanding a realistic end date. So we could go to the next slide. So, you know, this is the last slide, just some more pictures of work at the site. For us, you know, the county meets weekly with the contractor. We meet bi-weekly with Mount Vernon to address any issues. And we're just really continuing to push the contractor and the consultant to address issues, to progress the work and focus on finishing the project. Any questions?
First, what's the timeframe of completion?
The timeframe for completion, we, we, we should know in the next two months what we expect the completion to be. We have been looking at fall of this year. It will probably not be complete in the fall of this year.
Yeah, originally, I think they're hoping to have high school graduations there. I guess that's not going to happen. What about, you said debris that has been found. Now, this had been a estate, Department of Environmental Facilities site. Have you found more brownfields type of debris?
Debris was more just objects in the ground. You know, I'm told there was a shopping cart found and different, you know, objects that had been buried at the site.
Has the site been signed off by the state?
I think it has all of its sign off. You know, the, the soils, when it's removed and disposed of, you know, it's tested and disposed of appropriately. So we're getting all the approvals and appropriate disposal that's required.
Anyone else have any comments or questions?
Yes, it's Kathy. Hi, Gail. Quick, quick question for you. Have they begun any further conversation on parking for this event? I mean, for this area?
I'm not aware of any, you know, discussions or changes to parking, but I could look into that.
I think before you were on board with the county, the last conversation was parking across the street in the Target Shopping Center. The discussion was the top floor had space, but I think it's great. I'm thrilled that it's being done, but you have 3,900 seats, you know, unless everybody comes in public transportation. That'll be exciting for down there. So I was just wondering if, if there are further conversation in that parking structure across the street.
Yeah, I mean, we've been focused on the construction and pushing the contractor. So I'm, I'm not, I'm not aware of any further conversations, but I can certainly look into it.
Thank you.
There is public parking across, across Garden, I guess, right? North side of Sanford Boulevard.
Uh, I don't remember.
There, there, it's not a large structure, but there is parking. But not for 3,900.
Yeah. Thank you.
Anyone else have any comments on Memorial Field? Okay, anyone else have any other business or any other thing they'd like to discuss before we adjourn the meeting?
Thanks, Richard. Just one quick thing to Dwight. The idea of meeting outside for a regular meeting in June sounds good to me, but it would be, hopefully, the capital budget review would be better on the WebEx thing so that we could get all the technical support for that. But that's just a quick comment.
We agree with you. Yes.
Yeah, that, that special meeting will be on WebEx to have it roll quickly. Thank you.
Richard, just a quick, yeah, Richard is, just quickly, Mount Pleasant, the comprehensive plan. Was there any further conversation with anybody regarding additional parking and working with the church and the property behind it?
No, no additional conversation at this point, Kathy. We've, we've definitely brought it to the county executive's office's attention. And we have actually shared the comprehensive letter with the county executive because we wanted him to be aware of the issues and some of the connections and that the town's making with their plan and the county facilities, including the park. So, and I did have a conversation with Joan about the pedestrian bridge and why the county planning board felt that that was important to be able to get more people to take public transportation, to be able to get to those KENSICO events to eliminate the need for additional parking there. So she was on board with us.
Okay. Okay, great. Thank you.
Any member have anything else want to bring up? Okay, well, thank you, everybody. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you, Rob. Can I have a second?
Second, Kathy.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. I think I heard everybody in favor. So everyone, everyone stay safe and be well and we'll get together again next month, maybe even outside. We'll see.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye-bye.